No, we're having it. Very well, it's seven twenty-one caller. Planning Commission meeting to order here on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Present are Chairman Wayne Franzen, Commissioners Lori Thomas and Severn Johnson. For our schedule tonight. Lori, could you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? And Severn, would you offer invocation for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission super bowl. I pray for this opportunity to be together as planning commission. You would ask the devil lessons and questions. You may be able to listen and understand. Make application of our ordinances for the best of our ability. And may pray for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of September twenty, twenty twenty-three minutes. In our last meeting in December, made an error in in naming the minutes that we were approving. We approved the right minutes, but they were November minutes by error. They used the term November on our agenda. So it's a September minutes that we wanted to approve by name. So with that brief explanation, and that's why we have these two different groups of minutes tonight. So I take a motion to go ahead and approve this September twentieth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Make a motion to approve the September twentieth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Okay, in a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Then again, our last meeting that we held, which I sent the minutes out last night, December sixth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Did you have any questions on those? They were a little bit different. I didn't want to have to rewrite everything again, and so I just included what? The ordinance and so forth that we had approved. Included those as a PDF file to attach to the minutes there. So that was my reason for doing that, make it clear. So any questions on that? Okay, I'll take a motion then on December sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
I approve that we approved the December sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing we want to talk about is our meeting schedule. There's a copy of it there on your desk for this coming year. I'd propose that we keep the third Wednesday of each month for our meeting, and we will have meeting unless we cancel it. So that lists each third Wednesday. It's a clear Wednesday. There are no other meetings that are are held. Then so it's a it's a good night. It seems to work with everybody. So I take a motion to approve the meeting schedule for this coming year on the third Wednesday of each month.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting schedule as.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Right, second, like Severn. All in favor?
Aye.
Very well, thank you. Next comes a selection of for chairman and vice chairman. This is something that we do every year.
Do they have to be here tonight to?
Uh, no, no, they don't have to be. It can be sustained in abstention.
Who's the vice chair?
Severn is.
No.
Oh, Larry is. That's right. There he is. Yeah. So. Take any nominations?
We need to make two motions or one motion?
Uh, let's let's do it in two.
Okay. I move that Wayne Franzen be elected as the planning commission chair.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your confidence. Uh, and I'll take nominations now then for the vice chairman.
Larry would like to continue. Okay, I'll make a motion for Larry Henry to be the vice chair.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Very well. So be it. I was gonna interview Simon or introduce Simon to you tonight. Just a little bit about him. He lives down in Four Seasons. He's lived here for a couple of years. He's done a number of things. Right now, he's a builder, does building of homes. He spent a lot of it, some of his time up in the northwest and Washington area. Oh, anyway, I think he'll be a good addition and knows a little bit about building and which will be an asset, I think, for for him to have.
I think it's good to have someone from that area of the town also some represent.
John Wallace recommended him. John knows him well. Has worked with him in the past a little bit. And so talking to him and that he's been presented to the council and they've approved him. It's I do. The alternate is assignment is for a year. He is renewed every year. For ours is every three years renewal. So anyway, I think he'll he'll do good. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the preliminary plan approval for Bellevue subdivision Phase B. Carol Bell is here tonight with her husband, and Ken Berg is the engineer who has worked on the plans and put them together. For a planning commission benefit, they've been back and forth a couple of times and had some pretty thorough reviews by Jones and DeMille. And there's a few questions that that I have in in looking at the their last submission, which is a was an update from the comments that Jones and DeMille had. So I'll review those with with you all here. But Ken, I don't want to speak for you, so if you'd like to go ahead and just verbally share with us a little bit of what you've done and where you're at. If that turn that microphone on there so green shows very good.
Um, this is a redo of a redo of a redo sort of subdivision. Thank you, Carol, for keeping me employed. You know, really, this is due to the just timing of construction of this subdivision, our previous approvals had lapsed. So we've resubmit. That's why we're here tonight to re-get preliminary plan approval, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks or months to get final plat approval. To complete this subdivision, in the meantime, I think you'd switched review engineering companies with a fresh set of eyes. There's been additional concerns. The first time we submitted, I came down, we had a really good meeting, and we talked through past history and decisions that had been previously made, which Jones and DeMille weren't aware of. And so that helped to resolve a majority of the questions. And so I I feel confident in the plan that we have and and any of the concerns that you have, I'm sure we can get those cleaned up for our final set of construction drawings.
Okay. Uh, let me share a couple of comments and
Sure.
questions for you. And Severn, I know you and Lori are probably seeing this for the for the first time, so and that's that's fine. While I'm talking, maybe there's some things that will come to your to your mind. On on lot number three, Ken, I don't see any driveway provision on the plans that we've got. Where that I I assume the plan is to come off of Valley View Way for lot number three and not off of Bell Cove.
Yes.
But I don't, I just yet I don't see it.
I I I in preparing the plans, I think lot three was never really a question where the the concern was there's never been a concern of how lot three could develop, so I didn't draw a driveway in there, but we can we can show one that gets to the building pad.
We because because what will be there, in essence, will end up on the final plat.
Yeah.
And we have driveway distances away from property lines and so forth.
Right.
We want to make sure that those distances are adhered to on a final plat.
Okay.
So that
Happy to do it.
Whoever buys that. So that that's one area if you would give some further attention to. On lot number six, which is down at the end of the of in the cul-de-sac, the driveway is close. We require a twenty-foot distance from the property line to the driveway. And that driveway is closer than that, I suspect, because you didn't want to create a problem with the drainage easement that goes out of the back back of that lot. I think our engineer has looked at that easement and determined that a thirty-foot distance is is appropriate for the easement. There's a question. In our ordinances, there's no specified width of any of a of a drainage easement, only that it must be no, there can be no construction within thirty feet of easement. And I think our our engineer has looked at that and determined that a thirty-foot distance is appropriate for that easement to have. So it's something that is probably going to need a variance so that you're closer than you you closer than twenty feet of the property line in order to stay away from the drainage easement.
Sure.
So that's something that the planning commission needs to consider in the approval is possibly if we can do that, we need to see if we can, but if we can, to make an allowance for that variance. So that you're closer to the property line, but as close as you can be and still maintain the distance from.
That the thirty-foot easement is more important than being the twenty feet from the property line.
Yeah. Particularly where the adjoining lot five, the driveway starts clear on the other side of the
Yeah, that's a good point.
There. So the reason is is explained to me, because this has been around longer than I've been here, is this twenty-foot distance was was established so that proper snow removal could be had, and you're not blowing snow on one another's property and one another's driveway. And snow's a fact of life up here.
Yes, it is.
So that's the reason years ago, this twenty-foot easement was established so that as property owners cleared their driveway, they weren't blowing snow under neighbors' lots. So anyway, just
I'd like to maybe learn what two families caused this ordinance to happen. Might be some kind of Hatfield and McCoy sort of sort of history of Woodland Hills.
Well, you're probably right. They've probably moved since.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's one question that I have that we'll need to further address. We, I know there've been some issues with the fill dirt being placed there on on Bell Cove. And it's it's been suggested that that this be included on the on the final plat, this wording. Any testing that is required, this is of the of the fill. And let me back up. Undocumented fill under roadways is not approved. Any testing that is required must be done with the advance approval of our city engineers and comply with generally accepted testing standards. Undocumented fill in the roadways can be removed from the public right of way and replaced with road base and other approved road material with the approval of the city engineers. Now, we've gone back and forth on that a little bit, I know, and we just we just wanted to make clear of what of how we go forward from here, so there isn't any question.
Yeah, no, that's that's appropriate, and I we're on the same page.
Okay.
As well, so.
There's there's another question, and it might be addressed with the notes on the on the plat, and I refer to the the septic fields. Can you explain to me a little bit, and this is on C three, where that has some of these notes? And I see one of the notes is that on lots four, seven, I think, am I, what, eight? Four, seven, and eight, I think, three of them, that there's to be an alternate septic system for those lots because of the grade. Can you explain to me a little bit what these alternate septic system is?
So again, as a point of education, if any of you probably will, oh, how should I phrase this? When you will all probably have to replace your current septic system, if you live in a part of town that has a septic system, you won't be able to have the one that you have now. They'll require an alternative, alternate, more technology. It's a little more cost of costly upfront. It's just a different way to to process the waste than a than a traditional septic tank and drain field. It's similar, but it's it has it's just configured a little bit differently. Uh, and and requires a little more design and approval from Utah County. Those notes came from Utah County as part of their uh, the initial testing that you require.
Are there electrical components to the to that system?
Some of them have, yes. Some require the the sewage to be pumped to a more appropriate drain field. Some have like grinder pumps attached to break the solids down into smaller pieces to speed up the treatment. There's several different alternatives that fall within that that category.
So there's just not one. There's a number of them, and depending upon the
Depending on the size of the house, the actual location of where it is, there's there's a multitude of those septic designs that are appropriate, that fit under that alternate category.
Okay.
Than just, hey, we need a great big leach field, and this is where it's this is where it's going.
And the county controls that based upon the standards that they're looking at and saying, okay, this is the kind that you need to put in there.
Yes. Yep. And I'm telling you, when you guys go back in, they're kind of, the old tradition is on its way out. The alternates are now becoming the normal.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Even where it otherwise would be an approved septic field and system to use, they're going, they're starting to require this other system.
Yeah, unless you're, you know, mid bench where it's nice and flat. You know, there's some places where a standard septic system is, you know, you're still fairly confident, but in Woodland Hills where it's steep and the soils are varied, more chances are you'll you'll have an alternate system as well.
Well, I know, I think they're they have a standard if it's if it's anywhere in a part of a thirty-five percent slope, then an alternate is
Yeah.
required.
Yeah.
That you're dealing with. So
Yep.
Okay, with that being said, one of our concerns is we don't control that. The county does.
Sure.
And it's a thought has been offered that there's some kind of a note that would be best included on the Mylar, final plat, Mylar, to let a buyer beware sort of thing. That the fact that we've got a lot that the city has approved and planted, it's based upon the approval of a proper septic system by the county.
Sure.
So that I mean, a long time ago, we've got some lots that are questionable whether they're even buildable. And but if they're planted, so they come back to the city and say, well, you approved the plat, and you know, shit allow us to build on. We don't want to get into that situation.
Sure.
But put some kind of a
And these alternate systems allow that to happen more often than before when there was just one, and if you couldn't make it fit, then you were out of luck.
And that's what we'd rely on. I mean, the county doing that.
Yep.
So we could you draft something for us?
I I've we've done this similar in a project out in Eagle Mountain that exact same scenario up on the benches.
Some kind of caveat or some
Yeah, it's just a notice
person needs to be aware of.
On the plat that that's the requirement.
Okay. You would do that.
Happy to do that.
All right. Excuse me. Those were the issues that kind of brought to my attention and from review done. I don't think there's anything there that we want to address this as we go forward, but I don't see anything there that would prohibit us from proving the preliminary plat. Um, provided that these other issues can be addressed before the final plat is is done.
Okay.
So that's my view on it. Excuse me. You, any of you have any questions? I know you're looking, I guess, probably for the first time tonight, so.
So will you be putting the the Bell Cove Road in as a developer?
Yes.
Okay, but it's not a private road.
No, it's a public road.
The second page, what are the rectangles with the little triangles in each lot first up?
Oh, those are the those designate the proposed septic drain field and its replacement, because the new rule with Utah County is you have to show one, but then you have to show that you have enough to have a second one to extend the life of your of your system.
So that's really the reason. A lot since there are two.
Yep.
So.
Yep. That was the requirement.
The other show are two, but they're continuing.
Yeah. Yeah. I was working with the county to say, this area is good, this area is, you know, it was the county, although they're in control, you guys don't get to to have the final say there. They they put us through the wringer to to verify that it can it can work upfront, so.
I understand what you mean. I had to go through that with mine when I built my house. I have a drain field that must be half an acre. I mean, I'm not kidding.
Yeah.
Basically, the whole backyard is a drain field.
Yeah.
Because we missed
The soils were just slightly off.
An inch and inch.
Yep.
And they made us put this huge drain.
Yeah. Have you done perk tests on any of the Phase B yet?
Every lot has a perk test.
Has it?
Has been completed. Yeah.
Very good. And I think we're good on the water shares as far as I understand, so. I'm your prior work done, I think.
Yep.
Water shares for each of those lots, so.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
To the water shares, there are some expenses. What do I do with them?
If you want to, what we call bank them with the city, in other words, put them in reserve. Where people come to us and are looking for water shares, we can refer them to you to do a private transaction. If you choose to sell one or all to a private party, somebody else who needs a water share, we can we can hold on to those for a long, long time. If you choose to do that, or
Now, all of them, Jody had me need all of them to the city. So, um, but I think they she said they could be sold within the city.
That's that's what he's talking about. That's that's banking. You're putting the water in, banking it with the city, and the city will say, oh, Carol has three acre feet, you know, they'll help keep track of that, that you can sell that to other parties.
Right.
Happens in many other cities as well. Yeah.
So that's that's your choice, but it's a pretty pretty good option. Think because people occasionally will say, where do I get water shares? And we can provide your name to them. There's another person who's doing the same thing with with their water shares, and we we leave the negotiation completely up to you, whatever you're charging or work out with them, that's entirely up to you. We don't get in the middle of any of that.
So if that transaction takes place, does Carol then they're dated to the city right now, right? So would we then date it to whoever she sold it to?
No, it would be dated to the city, and we'd just make an administrative record that this water share is now transferred to so-and-so who's going to be building a home.
So it ought to be in the city there.
It is in the It is in the city.
Okay.
They are.
So it's not somebody in some other community that's getting a water share?
No.
Okay.
They're only for the city, all right, city residents, be used within the city limits. That is your question, Carol?
Okay.
Any questions that?
What is your temperament for uh, putting in the road and inviting up the lots and so on?
If I'm gonna make it through all the approvals, we've already had um. Get um, putting it in.
Are you planning to start springtime and is you're, do you have a schedule yet that you've put together as to, once the approvals are done? Um. Wintertime is probably not a good time to.
Yeah, they do have an extra fee for winter, um, for doing it in the winter, but. We have done work in the winter before, so I, it'll probably just depend on that.
Okay. Very well.
Thing I said, it could be before so that and lots are ready for someone to build on in summer, otherwise you're another.
Yeah.
The sooner the, you know, better.
You have some buyers signed up?
They kind of come and go, it's been a long process. So there's been people on the list and then people that find somewhere else, so we're, you know, we don't have anything. So you can't really sell until you have approval and everything listed with the county. Has to be planted with the county first. A process.
Any, any other questions that you have?
What's our next step?
What's what?
What's our next step? We.
Do we approve?
We approve the preliminary.
We we would approve the preliminary and then it goes to the city council for uh, preliminary approval. And then once the council approves a preliminary, their property already started working on on the finals. That would uh, come forward, usually it's a lot, it's same thing with maybe a few. Uh, minor changes with the with the preliminary plat to to go to final.
But we don't need to worry about the engineering of the fill that is there and.
No. That'll all be taken care of, and once they. Depending on what they do, the. Our engineers, our s- city public works director. Will oversee periodic periodic inspections of the work that is going on over there in the road building. Primarily in the infrastructure that's going in, this, the, the water. And that sort of thing, we we don't do it, we'll oversee, make sure that things are being done according to our. So. Um, all right, I will. On C one, so there are. Um, some delineations on where the driveways for those properties will be.
Yes.
But I don't see one on lot three.
That's the one we talked about.
Wayne, Wayne already grilled me on that one and I I promised him I would show that one as well.
Sorry. No, it's all right, yeah, glad you picked up on it.
Glad you. Recognize that.
But it'll come off of Valley View Way, Larry.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because that's closer to the.
Right on the.
Where the the house is going to be going, right?
Yeah.
But don't we usually like to have the driveways off of the main roads?
Um, yeah, driveway or home one and two are both on on Valley View there. Um. But.
Yeah, probably.
We're. Prefer that, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
So if they want to take a lot.
Put it off either and let the home builder decide.
I can check the distances and see if the grades work either way. I'll surprise you next time you see us at final on a driveway for a lot.
If I can remember when the meeting is.
We debated coming to your house.
My wife would not relate, you know, I was running errands for her, so.
Oh, okay.
We'd have been there waiting for you.
I was like too worried, so it's not over.
One of my favorite Russian sayings is luciporis muchimnikovda, which is better never late.
Yeshua, God, yeshua.
Well, that's good. Hehava inu huti ide.
What can you throw in there? We've got some Russian.
Keep their tidy as well. A little late, not good.
Okay, um. I'll take motion, consider um. Recommend, I want to word word it kind of carefully because we want to include these um. Conditions that we need to be fur- we want to further address.
So we need to address, we need to say something about the driveway on three. The possible variance on six.
Yes, and a note. On the plat regarding the septic.
So those really, those three things?
And the also a note on the. Fill for the roadways.
Okay, so the roadbase.
Right, those four things.
All right. Okay. I propose then we approve the preliminary plot. For the Bell subdivision. With the following four. Items to be addressed. The driveway for lot three. A possible variance on the driveway on lot six. A note to address the septic fields. And the requirements of the county. And fourth, a note on the roadbase for Bell Cove.
Second, Matt.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It finally happened.
Thank you.
Don't think we've ever had a plus, be sure.
Appreciate your patience.
Oh.
So if you can get me some wording on the septic.
I will.
We can include there and then we'll, I'll. Send back to you some thought, what I read here with the with the fill and so forth on the.
Okay.
On the roadbase. Um, and then you can go ahead, three and s- now, the reason I hesitate a little bit on six. I'm not sure it's something the planning commission has authority to do.
Sure.
That variance, but if we do, we'll do that, so and we'll explore that and then I'll let you know.
That'd be great, so. Thank you, we'll get with Jody on our next step, timing to get to city council.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be likely be the second Tuesday in February. I know they've got a full agenda already for for this month.
Probably Valentine's Day, just so my wife will know, so I don't make her feel good.
Fourteenth, the second Tuesday of.
Oh, it's the thirteenth.
Oh, day before, there you go.
Dodged it. No, it's the fourteenth.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Well, they may, they may change it, I don't know if that's. That's the case, but we'll we'll let you know, Jody's the one that will coordinate that, so we'll.
That'll be great.
We'll be in touch with you on it, so.
Do they usually spend as much time discussing these things as we do after we bear expectation?
Not so much, right. Yeah, they take our recommendation. You bet, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Very good.
Don't forget your purse.
Oh, it's his.
All right.
Oh, it's a man purse.
I'm sorry. Good night. Matt.
And now can we make a motion to?
Yeah, let me ask first, is there anybody here who wants to make a public comment? I I forgot to do that, so just for the record, nobody here to make a public comment, so. Uh, yeah.
Anybody online?
Ken. No, I'm good, thanks, thanks for asking.
Very good.
I'm I'm good, thanks for asking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyman.
No problem.
Um, okay, take a motion to. Conclude the meeting.
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, I am is three minutes after eight. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
So what happened on item number eight? You are.
You were elected in abstention.
You're the chair, you're the chair.